I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call vote please, roll call please?
Mayor Gary Moore.
President.
City Attorney Gary Rice.
Here.
Alderman Terry Stahl.
Here.
Alderman Alan Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Cheryl Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Eugene McGill.
Present.
Alderman Bruce McKibben.
Here.
Alderman Clifford Reaver.
Here.
Alderman Dewey Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Cody Atterbury.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum so we can continue on. The next would be the approval of the amendments of the last meeting in December. You've had a chance to review those minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If there are no corrections, is there a motion to approve?
I like that motion.
A first by Stahl, a second by Cheryl, Ms. Eccleberry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Does anyone wish to abstain? Minutes are approved. Next would be the bills that were submitted. Since we skipped the council meeting, the bills were kind of large this time for this year or for this time. Any questions on any of the bills that were submitted? If none, is there a motion to approve the bills? Make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Alderman Dewey Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman McKibben, to approve the bills for December 26th and January 9th bills. Roll call vote. Atterbury?
Yes.
Dewey Eccleberry?
Yes.
Cheryl Eccleberry?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
McKibben?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
And the bills are approved. At this time, we will come to the public comments section of the meeting. If anyone would like to address the city council, please raise your hand. I'll ask you to step up front and state your name. You'll have three minutes to address the council. At this time, is there anyone that would like to address the council? Having seen none, we will close the public comments sections and move into routine business. The first item on the agenda is, I guess, a happy day for an employee and maybe a sad day for the city of Fairfield. Lauren Dunn here is, has worked fifty long years for the city of Fairfield. Lauren began his duties with the city of Fairfield on February the 26th, 1973, and was a member of the light plant. He worked a couple of years at the water distribution department and a 1981 transfer to the gas department. Lauren Dunn retired from the city on December the 31st, 2023, with fifty some years of service. In today's world, that's an accomplishment with the buyouts, the job changing. That's a very admirable tenure of service, and we thank you very much. Lauren worked under twelve different administrative mayors. The first one was Sam Puckett. Lauren is a person that you can count on to be there. His, in the fifty years that he was there, he only had extended time one time with a shoulder injury. And, you know, it's, it's a great accomplishment. Lauren, when you seen Lauren, Lauren always had a smile on his face and was willing to do whatever needed to be done. And Lauren was one of those employees that he done his job, he went home, and he came back the next day to do it again. At this time, we have a presentation for Lauren, and Lauren, if you would like to step forward, please. And I've known Lauren almost my entire life. We grew up together on the south side of town. We played a lot of baseball on Seventh Street. Basically, to the plaque here says, presented to Lauren L. Dunn, in appreciation of your years of dedication to the city of Fairfield, fifty years of service, 1973 to 1923. Service completed. One more round of applause. Again, it's good to see years of that service. We'll move forward now. Item number two is the audit report from Kemper CPA. Michelle Smith is here, and I believe everybody's got a copy, and Michelle will walk us through the audit.
Good evening. As Mayor said, I'm Michelle Smith of Kemper CPA Group. I am the partner in charge of your audit. I was here during the field work this year, and we have an audit report for you. We're going to start, though, with the letter that you have on top of the audit report. It's a two-page, or you, uh, it's too big of a, two pages, three pages. This is a letter that's required to give you every year. It just, it summarizes significant things that happened in the audit. It has a whole lot of, didn't have this, didn't have this, didn't have this, which is what we want to have. We don't want to have any of these things. It's bad, so. Does anybody have any questions on this letter full of nothing? Okay. We're going to go to the audit report. You have, you guys have two reports. One of them is the TIF report, which I'm really not going to go over. It's included in the audit report. So the thicker packet, that's your audit report. We're going to start on page one. All right, let me open here. Page one, just, I always like to point out the audit opinion. They rearranged things a couple of years ago, so that makes it really easy. The top of the page, the second paragraph says, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. The, on a modified cash basis, the financial position of the, of the city. So that is an unqualified opinion. That's the kind of opinion that you want to have. So that indicates that we didn't really find anything major wrong when we were doing, we're doing the audit this year. Any questions on that? Okay, we're going to flip back to page five, and this is the statement of net position, or if you live in the for-profit world, or not profit world, it's your balance sheet. And this is what we call the government-wide, so it gets all the funds together on, on this statement. And so I just kind of looked this year to last year to see what had changed. I always go at a really high level. You guys don't have that information in front of you, so you're going to have to trust me when I tell you things change. But your cash position is up about $556,000 over last year. Most of that is you received $264,000 of money for the motor fuel tax fund. That is restricted for certain things, and you didn't spend any of that this year. So it's just kind of sitting there, and that is pretty much why, that's the bulk of why that fund increased. There's some other smaller things, but that was, that was the big thing. Going on down, capital assets, under governmental activities, which would be your general fund, so all your services that you provide, and then the business type activities, which is your water, sewer, electric, gas. But you'll see, if you looked at last year's, the capital assets for the governmental fund, you're a little bit lower this year, and that's because you had purchases of only $213,000, but some of those assets were depreciated down. So the value of those go down every year. Over time, things were out, and we depreciate them. In the business type activities, you had about a $1.7 million increase there. Most of that was in the sewer and water fund. You guys were doing a lot of the treatment plant this year, so $1.7 million in new capital assets there. And then the other part is the electric fund. You had $1.2 million in the electric fund, but then you have offsetting that. You have, again, that depreciation expense that brings that back down, so a $1.7 million gain there. Any questions over any of the assets? So we're going to go on down to the liability section then, and the big thing here is your bonds went down, and that's good. That means your paper bonds down. That's always a good thing. And that's really the only thing that's changing much in the, in the liability section. Any questions on that? Okay, we'll go ahead and go to page six. This is your income statement. It looks a little bit different if you look at something that would be like a, a, a business. But if you look in the column that says charges for services at the top of the page, you can see, this is divided again into our general fund, and then our governmental funds, and then our proprietary funds. So the charges for services were up just a little bit, really not even enough to really talk about. The big thing kind of here, kind of big, is the next column, which is operating grants and contributions. That is actually down, and I think that is some of the cares money that you guys had received previously. That's kind of, all that stuff's kind of going away now. So it was definitely grants that drove that number down this year versus last year. You'll see if you go on down to the business type activities in that column, you got a $200,000 grant. That was for the water tower. Any questions on that? I will draw your attention to the very bottom of the page. It says net position, beginning restated, no eighteen. We're going to talk about that in a few minutes, about what, what that was about, but I also want to point that out, too. No questions? We're going to skip, if you wanted to look at, say, the governmental funds, page seven, it breaks out, pages seven and through page nine, breaks out those funds for you, so you can see how each fund did on its own. I'm not going to go over those because we just said a lot of the data over the whole, the whole thing, so. Then starting on page eleven, that's your, that's your proprietary funds, your business type activity funds, and again, that's just so you can see the detail of, of how it's finished. Any questions on any of those? Okay, we're going to go ahead and skip back to page twenty-five. One thing I didn't point out when we're looking at the state of activities, you'll see we had some transfers going in and out, and those relate to, the city has one bank account. Has one bank account, but you have to break it down into the funds when you're talking about.
He didn't want me to feel bad.
So overall, the city had a positive cash balance, but when we're looking at an audit and we're reporting each fund, some of those funds had negative cash balances, so we had to transfer accounts, we had to transfer money between the funds to make sure that we zeroed out those negative balances. So note three talks about the common bank account, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about. You have one bank account. It had plenty of money in it, but when we looked individually at funds, they did not. So you can't have negative cash on our financial statements. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Um, next one. I'm not going to read you all the footnotes, because, you know, if you need to sleep later, you might pick a fender, but I wouldn't, I don't, I don't like to read them off the top. Um, page thirty-nine. That last note says restatement. When we were doing the 2023 audit, we found some assets, some capital assets, that did not get capitalized last year. So we capitalized $210,000 worth of assets in the electric fund that were actually expensed last year. So that brought your net position up. It, it made it increase from five point, five million, two fifty-nine, three fifty-three to five million, four sixty-nine, four forty-eight. So we made an adjustment that affected last year. So that's what, that's what that's about. Any questions on that? Okay, I just got a couple more things. I always like to point out, I'm going to find the page. I thought I had it marked, but here it is. Page forty-two. Um, we always have what we call findings, and an audit will always have them, but this is one we have on a lot of audits, and it's one you guys have had since I've been here auditing, which has been several years now. Um, this, and this basically says that you can't prepare your own financial statements, and when I mean prepare financial statements, I mean create this document. Um, so you don't have somebody on staff who can do that, so you get this, you get this comment in here. They started doing this, I don't know how many years ago. It's, I feel like I've been talking about for a long time. Um, doesn't mean you've done anything bad or wrong, and actually, Kayla and I met earlier, and we were going over some of the entries that we have made, and she's going to try to start making some of those. So this could possibly, possibly go away in the future, because we did make a lot of adjustments to the audit. And that's all I have for you. Have any questions?
I have a couple.
Okay.
If we was to turn to page twelve of the audit, um, and that's it, that is our business-like accounts. If you look there at the total, um, under non-operating revenues and expenses, you see the fourth line says transfers out. We transferred out $2.3 million. Could you kind of give us?
Explain that?
Explain that, please.
Okay, so some of that went to the general fund, which is not appearing on this page, so about $400,000 went to the general fund to help fund things in the general fund, like the police department, the fire department, and other things in the general fund. But most of that went to the water fund. You can see in the water and sewer column, of that $2.3 million, $1.969 went to the water department. So the gas and electric are basically funding the water department at this point.
And that's something, you know, and I've talked with Michelle, I mean, it's something that every probably municipality, village, state of Illinois, it does, but it shouldn't be. You know, if you take, if you take a look under the water, the waterworks and the sewer, and that includes the filtration, the water distribution at our sewer plant, you see an operating income loss of $334,215 there. I, I went back to some previous audits, all the way back to 2017, and that number was $710,000 loss. And again, in 2023, it was $334,215. I mean, we have made some improvements, but I'm going to challenge the finance committee and everybody that sits on this council. You, you know, we stepped up in December, and we've done what we needed to do to try to help with the police and fire pensions. We have to get something done at our water filtration, water sewer. It, it just continues, you know, and I can't speak of the past, you know, we can see some numbers of the past. But if, if we're not willing to step up, I, I mean, we're, we're letting our residents of the city of Fairfield down. I mean, I'm not asking, I don't think that we can turn that entity around in a year or so, but we got, we got to make some better strides than what we're doing right now. You know, as Michelle said, the electric and the gas department are funding, are subsidizing the other two, and it's just not what needs to happen. You know, we have to develop a plan, and, and we have developed plans. We've got some meter fees that increase automatically, and we've got some rates that are going. But, you know, every year, salaries go up, benefits goes up, chemicals go up, raw goods go up, but yet, we just sit there, and sometimes, we, we don't want to say we need to take a look at this because we're afraid of the ramifications that we will face from the city. But, but, you know, we, we have to develop a plan, you know, after, and, and Michelle says we got one bank account. Well, that's really what this financial statement is, if I give, that's a snapshot of our checking account. And it's posted on, on social media after every meeting, you know, la, the last one we'd done, you know, there was comments on there, well, why don't the city just go ahead and file bankruptcy? Bankruptcy's not an option, but we, as the leaders of the city, we're going to have to grab this bull by the horns and see what we can do. I, I mean, I understand that, that a dilapidated house, or a tall grass, or, or a inoperable vehicle is important, but the most important thing is what goes on in these business-like accounts. And if we can't, you know, if we can't make it less painful, we all know what a privately-owned business would do with that entity. They would sell it. You know, and I'm not saying that's what we need to do, but we've got, we've got to develop a plan that, that this number improves and the other one stays. I, I've asked Shannon Connor from Connor and Connor to do a rate study on the water. That would be, he is working on that now, and he will come to the board, to the council, with some recommendations. But, you know, the city, and I've said it many times, we're funded in, in a few ways. The sale of our utilities, sales tax, we get some, some other taxes, motor fuel tax. But it's going, it's going out just as fast as it's going in, and, and we have to develop a plan. And, and I think the residents of the city of Fairfield, you know, that's what they've elected us to do, is to develop a game plan that we don't have to talk about selling, you know, the water filtration or the water services, or, you know, but, but we have to develop something. I'm going to challenge the council and myself to come up with a way to stop the bleeding, just like we, you know, we've done on the police and fire pension. We, we got the number from the police pension. We will make strides with what we're contributing to that this year. That number will go down. We still do not have the police number yet, but, you know, and, and Michelle, I appreciate you letting me take the time, but, you know, we need to look at these numbers, and just because that's the way it's been done before, that's not the way we need to do it today. Okay?
Michelle, do you have anything else?
I don't.
Does anybody have any questions for Michelle? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for having to sit your audit. We appreciate it. Have a good evening.
At this time, what we normally done last year is we, we just asked that we accept the financial audit from Kemper and Smith, Kemper CPA, for the year 2023. At this time, is there a motion to accept the audit?
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Abstain? Carry. Uh, item number three is a ordinance for a TIF agreement with Jim and Cindy McClary. Uh, the, the TIF committee had a meeting with them, and Cody is in charge of the, of that committee, so I will let him bring us up to, to that.
Okay, so this is the building that was the old service master next to Stoddard Eye Care parking lot. Jim and Cindy approached us and said they were going to be doing some renovations on the building. We've actually completed the roof. I think that was the next week after they met with us, I believe, but they completed the roof on it. It was a $20,000 job. It's a really, I didn't realize it, but it's a really large building, and they're wanting to keep it in good shape so that it can be utilized in the future. But the TIF committee offered them, because there was no jobs being created at the moment, with our kind of formula we use, we offered them $4,000 to help them with their roof repair.
Any questions? If there are no questions, is there a motion to approve the agreement?
Are they, I, I just wondered, is it something, is it their, is it their building that they've owned for a while?
I believe they've owned it for a while. I can't tell you the number of years, but yeah, they, it's, they've owned it for a while.
Well, they're just wanting to keep it in good shape to do something with it in the future.
And if you went back in the alley here not too long ago, in the alley that runs behind those, but you would see shingles that are on the ground falling in between the buildings, so I mean, it was, it was something that was, needed to be done. Any other questions?
Somebody made a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Alderman Reaver, seconded by Alderman Atterbury, to approve the ordinance for the TIF agreement with Jim and Cindy McClary, in the amount of $4,000. Roll call vote. Dewey Eccleberry?
Yes.
Cheryl Eccleberry?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
McKibben?
Yes.
Reaver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Atterbury?
Yes.
That ordinance is approved. Item number four is an ordinance allowing a reimbursement for hazardous material response. And basically, the, the water filtration plant is kind of what spurred this ordinance to be brought forth. A couple of weeks ago.
It's been, what, three now?
Yeah, three, time flies. About three weeks ago, after the water filtration plant, we've got a room that's got some chlorine tanks in it. We've got some alarms in there. The alarms were going off. There was a chlorine leak. Jonathan Tips at that time called the, Andrew and his group to come out and take a look and see what was going on. And Andrew at that time made the decision that he felt that we needed to call the hazmat team from Mount Vernon in, uh, to help us, you know, get the chlorine out of the building and, and the scene secured. So they responded. You know, my phone call to Andrew.
You know, my phone call to Andrew was saying, what happened out there? Well, it come to find out, it was a valve on a chlorine tank that had cracked. Again, that property did not belong to the city of Fairfield. So I asked Andrew, was we going to see any cost incurred because of the hazmat team responding from, from Mount Vernon? And Andrew says, I'm not for sure, but he says, you need to take a look at this. That, that the city of Mount Vernon has this policy. He had a copy of it, and I asked him to get it to Attorney Rice. And, and basically, what this ordinance is going to allow us to do, if there's a hazardous material spill, we have the ability, if we have to call in the experts or a chemical hazmat team, and there's cost incurred, we can go back to the person per se that spilt it. You know, the, the, the tank manufacturer, the owner of the vehicle, you know. And, and that will allow us to recoup costs. Did I miss anything, Andrew?
No, that's, that's it. It's, it just allows us locally, at the local level, to, to be able to make that, that building. There is, it is, it is backed by state statute to allow us to do that, but that gave us the power at the local level to be able to do that, so.
Attorney Rice?
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add, but it is set out there as by statute that provides that, you know, whoever is deemed responsible, they're required by statute to reimburse us. So we have this policy in place just to kind of, you know, enact that requirement. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to extend on.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does anyone wish to abstain? The ordinance has passed. Item number five is the award of a bid for the West Tower painting. Enclosed in your packet, we resented out for bids, and we had, we had two companies that put a bid in. Those was Newman Company out of Wisconsin and Jetco out of Wakanda, Illinois. You, you see the prices there that were bid. In discussions with Connor, Shannon and Connor and Connor, it's going to be my recommendation that we reject these bids and that we rebid. Questions? The, the two bids that we got, one of them was three hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. The other one was five hundred and thirty-six, eight seventy-one. I believe we had a appropriation of about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, again, understand that the West Water Tower does need maintenance, it does need painted. It's, it's a twenty, built nineteen ninety-three, I believe, is that correct, Brad?
Yes.
Nineteen ninety-three, and we, and not too much has done, been done to it. So we want to make sure that we attempt to maintain that one a little better than we did the green and, and brown one there on Main Street. So I'm going to ask that the council reject these bids and we put it back up for bid at a later date. Is there a motion to approve the rejection? The Eccleberry, and seconded by Alderman Miguel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Anyone wish to abstain? And we reject those bids for the tower painting at this time. Item number six is a discussion on no parking on both sides of the street on the four hundred block of Sluter Street. It's been brought to the council's attention numerous times. That, that they would like to see something done with the parking down there. The, the street is a little bit small. Assistant Chief Ben and Chief Calklager have been down there. Chief, do you want to? And also in your packets, you know, Keith did provide a, a snapshot of the area.
Yeah, hopefully everybody got that. So Sean Anderson lives in the second ward. He's approached police department and Alderman McKibben and Reaver concerning parking near his driveway. He backs out on the Sluter Street, which is narrow. The house across the street has changed ownership, and they have a lot more guests, I guess you would say. And he has, having issues backing out of his driveway. On his side of the road, he does have a little easement after the roadway, but he's got a steep ditch that's concreted. He's got to stay pretty much on his driveway to get out, and if somebody parks right behind him, he's got a two-car driveway. The other house has a garage pretty much adjacent to it, and they're parking there, too. So it's getting tight corners right there. To the west, it tees towards the old reservoir. That's a very narrow road on Leroy. Assistant Chief looked at it, and we, we feel just make it no parking to alleviate all the problems in that area.
And what was you going to make to no parking from where to where?
The four hundred block, so George Street to Leroy.
And, and I know in having some conversations with a couple of Aldermen, there has been a resident express their displeasure that they don't want to see the no parking signs installed. They have family that come in on the holidays. And that is where those people park on that side of the road. So, I mean, there is, there is a little bit of, we really, we understand it, but we don't support it. So that's why it was time to put on the, the agenda this evening, just to have a discussion and what the council wants to do, or what they don't want to do. If they want to make it a no parking, we will have Attorney Rice draw that up in the ordinance form and have it back at the next council. And if we choose that we don't think that we want to make it a no parking, we'll, we'll move past that. Discussion?
So would it benefit if they did not park right where he backs out?
And, and I don't know, and Keith, you can answer this question. If, if Sean is backing out, I, I mean, is the resident across the road allowed to block his drive or to make it difficult to back out of the drive?
He can't block a drive. And Mr. Anderson's here, if anybody has any questions with him. From that aerial view, like I said, you can kind of see they're kind of caddying each other. And if somebody parks directly behind him, I mean, it's kind of a fair to get out. And so farther down that road going to the west towards the T, there's no residents anymore on the north side, but there is residents on the south side. You're correct on that.
And so what, not to put you on the spot, but what would be your recommendation?
Like I said, you can do the entire street. It would benefit, I just spoke with Andrew, it is narrow for the fire trucks, too. Or if you want to come back halfway, without measurements, I couldn't tell you, but maybe mid-block, no parking here at the corner of George. Like I said, coming off that corner of the T, Leroy is even narrower than Sluter.
And I, I guess I'm going to say, I have closed the public comment sections of the meeting, but I am going to allow some conversation here just a little bit. Sean is here, and I think I seen the gentleman in the back would also raise his hand. Sean, do you got, you go, you want to go ahead and tell us your thoughts? I mean, I think we know them.
I don't care if you put no parking all the way down the street or not. As long as it would be, you know, from my driveway back to the stop sign, it would be great. But I'll, I'll go with whatever you guys want. I'm just getting tired of getting blocked in all the time.
And how many times a week are you blocking them? Every day? Two or three times a week?
It varies. I mean, and it's all hours of the day and night. And, I mean, I've got a, I've got a mother that I help take care of in the middle of the night. If I have to leave in a hurry, I'm not worried about what's behind me. I'm going to shove it off the road and go.
I don't know, I'd want you to tell you.
Well, I, I haven't told all of you I'm going to do it.
Okay. Okay. All right. So anything else you'd like to add?
Like I said, I just want it, I mean, I know the neighbors to the south or to the west don't want it because of the family parking. But like I said, as long as I could get it from basically the east side of their, the east side of their garage, you know, where their drive is, back to George, I would be happy.
And have, have you had any conversation with your neighbors and?
Over and over.
And so, and, and we officially talked with the neighbors?
We've been involved.
Okay. And so through your patrolmen and one else, they're, they're just continuing to ignore it?
Well, like I said, some are recorded, some aren't. I don't know. I can give you the total number. I mean, I have the documentation that we have.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Sean. Stanton, are you arguing on the same thing?
Well, I mean, I, I just, I was having a dogfight, but I was down there watching the, kind of watching the area. I was understanding they were going to do all of Sluter. So I really don't have a dogfight, but like he's saying, if they go, I was down there watching today. There was somebody coming to his house and swinging pretty wide there to get into their drive. But east side, that guy's driveway on the south side to George, I think would cover it. I, you know, I hate to see the other people down through there be punished for, you know, something, the dispute they're having. But I think hi- his drive is just a little bit west of Sean's. So I think if you put no parking from there to the stop sign, would probably cover that area, help you get out.
Okay.
That's all I guess.
Thank you. So, so Chief, a couple of questions. If you, if you have asked and they continue to block it, you can issue a citation?
That's blocking of the driveway. That part on the other side wouldn't be blocking the driveway technically.
So if, if they, i- if you install the no parking zone, the tick, and they still park there, then they're going to get a citation for disobeying?
Traffic control.
Traffic control.
Some sort could be told.
Or could be told. Okay? Josh, we've got to ask some questions.
So the other options would be to the park, no parking to the corner, or can we do the no parking between the signs, which would cover the driveway?
You could. I could view your opinion. I can get you some, some points, and I didn't measure them out. I took the overall shot to try to show the correlation of the driveways and the shed, which seems to be the issue.
Yes, sir.
So the neighbors to the south can still park right in front of their own garage and to the west on that road? Because there's not much between the next house, right?
Right. And I do understand what the, the other neighbor's saying, too. They do have, I mean, I've seen it before. It's a pretty good distance from the shed to Leroy there. It is a tight corner, though. If I can, uh?
Can, can Ray, I mean, is there no parking from, from this time to that time? Is that beneficial?
From what he said, I mean, you could leave it anytime.
Okay. So guidance?
I don't know. No parking between two signs, two points.
Anytime.
Anytime, yeah.
Like from where the garages are at? Is that what you're thinking?
It, it would be beneficial to both parties because of someone parking their, his.
It's been both ways.
Then they couldn't get out either.
They've called it to settle it, too.
Yeah. So this, between two signs, two points.
I can either bring it back with some information or get with?
I, I think, if, if I'm wrong, you can tell me if I'm wrong. I, I think the council would like to see no parking from stop sign to stops in there.
Can I say something else?
Very quickly.
When they're parking at that garage, there's not enough room for their cars to even get off the road. Their cars are sticking out three foot into the road when they park in that driveway. I mean, they've got enough drive on their side of houses, too. But every time when they park at that garage, that pickup's sticking out three foot into the road. It makes it difficult on other people when they're passing by.
But those, those signs are covering that one. They're keeping the road.
Right. If you go signs from stop sign to stop sign, unless you're saying a parking in my home, my property. I mean, there'd be parking halfway in the property.
Are you wanting stop sign to stop sign, or are you?
Back in the middle to George.
So you're, you're saying, so maybe I missed out on what you said. So you're, you're wanting the door from George Street to?
To the end of the garage, to this, end of the south shed garage, yes.
Okay, so.
That can be done. I mean, can we, can we pick and choose?
Yeah, you can do that.
Yeah.
Extra amount of feet? Yeah.
I, I can do the measurements and get with Rice and.
So, so it's going to be, it's going to be the council guidance, then, that we're going to ask Keith to have a measurement made from George Street down, uh, past the garage, and, and we will make that no parking on both sides of the road. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Keith, you'll get the measurements to Darren. Darren, you'll have it ready for the next council.
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll move on to item number six, and that's just a discussion on the business tax district. In front of everybody, we've got some handouts for you, and this is, um, again, prelimin- preliminary. Uh, and, you know, when we get it sewn up to what we think we want, we'll have Attorney Rice draw it in ordinance form, and then it will be set in stone. As, as you're all aware, the business tax district was passed last, it went into effect last January. And at that time, we made the decision that we was going to allow the business tax district a year to grow the funds to, to cover some projects. In meeting with Doug, it would be, will be the administrator, as he is with Tip. In meeting with Doug and Libby and Claire Vaughn, you know, we kind of developed, you, you know, a thirty thousand foot view of the business tax district, understanding that there's, you know, some, there might be some changes at need. But, you know, we're, we're going to look here. And you'll see, we've got three different, uh, three different phases or projects. We've got a new projects program, we've got a municipal works program, and we've got a facade improvement grant program. We looked, you know, there was anticipation that the business tax district would, would accumulate about a million dollars a year. Kayla, do you know the last number?
Um, around thirty-five thousand.
Okay. So in, in talking with Moran, who is the gentleman that, that put this presentation on for the council, you know, we've had some conversations with him. And, you know, it was maybe his idea or his thoughts that maybe we should kind of split the business tax district up into some different funds for some different things. A couple of the things, you know, the business tax district has to be spent within the business tax district. There is no residential. That's not what the business tax district is for. We took a look. We also feel that there's, there's places that are dual use. For example, we've got a business downstairs, and we've got an Airbnb upstairs. It is not for residential, which is an Airbnb. The problem that happens there, and at the last meeting that the zoning board had, had a gentleman approach, wanted to turn a house that he bought into an Airbnb, and basically said at that meeting, well, I'm going to try it for an air, for a little while. If it doesn't work, I'll turn it into a rental. and basically said at that meeting, well, I'm gonna try it for an air, for a little while, if it doesn't work, I'll turn it into a rental. Uh, I, I don't think that that's what the use of the business tax district is. Um, so has to be retail, has, cannot be residential, and, and, and Airbnb is kinda exempt. I would also like to see, uh, that venues are excluded, they're not collecting sales tax, they're not doing anything except renting the building. That's, that's my, kinda my thoughts a little bit. Doug, have you got anything to add on that, just that subject?
No.
Okay, if, if you take a look at the, the city of Fairfield, the, the first one is a new projects. Uh, and, and, and conversations, if you look, uh, on, on page two, the program description, you know, basically says, uh, this physical improvement grant provides funding for a business district projects. Grants under this program shall not exceed ten thousand dollars per project unless otherwise approved by the city council. Not saying that you can't get more, it's just saying that it's gonna have to come. And everything, just like Tiff, has to come to the city council for approval. There, there is no go ahead and charge it to the business tax district, that's, I don't think that's what we wanna do. Uh, photos of showing the completed work, all invoicing receipts, validated project cost. Uh, and under the eligible applicants, if you'll see down there, it says mixed use properties, i.e. commercial with residential, will be considered, uh, you, you know, not considered. Tax exempt properties, uh, there are some businesses within the tax, taxing business district that are non-for-profit, do not, uh, you know, do not collect anything. But for those, we would like to have the ability to take a look at them one-on-one. If you want an example, the feed machine. They've got Tiff money, they're a nonprofit, but you, you know, they could benefit and, and the residents could benefit. And again, we just go through this, uh, if you look at page three, uh, it says the, of the budget allowance, and it says for twenty twenty-three, but, uh, we're just gonna ignore the year. You know, we're saying that the city will put two hundred thousand dollars of the total money collected into the new project. Uh, if you look up above, uh, interior building renovations, exterior building, building renovations and other facades, other items that are viewed necessary or complementary to the business tax district environment as accepted by the city of Fairfield. Thoughts on the new business, and, and again, we'll call the, and the committee that will oversee this will also be the Tiff committee. Uh, you know, they're doing it, so that will just, we'll just make that Tiff slash business tax committee. Uh, that's Alderman Advery, Alderman Reaver and Alderman Stoll, is that correct?
So that two hundred thousand, is that for just the city of Fairfield?
That was for, yes, for new property.
And that would be new businesses.
That would be anybody that, I, I mean, new projects, I mean, it could be Doug remodel, I mean?
Yeah, it's just for any business that is within the business district boundaries. And it goes for any new, any interior project or exterior project that's not a facade, facade covered by the facade pro- uh, part of the program.
But I mean, the building itself has to have a business in it, like the one that we just had with the tip with the, the roof. It doesn't necessarily have a business in it, but it is downtown, and we wanna keep it from getting dilapidated.
That's, that's where I said that I felt that it needed to be a retail operation that's contributing to the projects, to, to the.
Yeah, if it, if it is something that is contributing within the boundaries and is contributing, it can be looked at. If it's something that's been, it's not currently contributing, that is said, as the mayor said, it's something that we may have to revise a little bit. It's a brand-new program, as it goes along, we have to revise it somewhat, but this is what we're looking at to begin with.
You know, we've also put some timelines in there that, you know, that says, you, you know, the project needs to be completed within this timeframe, uh, you know, I mean, we, we, we do have some Tiff projects out there, uh, that have been awarded money, uh, you know, that, that didn't use them. So, I mean, we're gonna put a timeframe that says, uh, you know, within one year of the grant, you know, you need to have this completed. Uh, and, and again, I understand this is a quick flyby, as you take it home and maybe you read it, or if you've got some input, you, you know, share your input, and then we'll get together and try to get, try to get it drawn up. You know, there's, there's a, a sheet there of the grant application. Uh, one other thing that I wanna say, in transparency, uh, you know, I've had some heartaches with, with the Tiff and some of the things that it's been used for, and we're all aware of that, and it got used from things that it shouldn't have been used for. Uh, with any application for the business tax district, uh, the attorney for Moran, uh, or Terry Burker, who's the Tiff attorney, is going to look over the application and what it's for and say, I feel that that is an eligible expense. Uh, if he doesn't feel it's an eligible expense, uh, that's gonna come back to the council for their decision. So, any questions on the new projects program? If not, if you'll move over to the municipal works, uh, again, the process is, is pretty much the same. Uh, this is for acquisition, land management, repurposing of properties within the business district, utilities and other services that support the business tax district, and other items that are viewed as necessary or complementary to the business tax district environment as accepted by the city of Fairfield. This one, uh, we're going to put four hundred thousand dollars into the pool, that's would be eligible for expense. And again, if you look over it on the previous page, the eligible applicants and properties, uh, it kinda gives you a breakdown. Any questions on municipal works? The last one, uh, is the facade improvement program, and, and this one, uh, we felt that it needed to be a match. Uh, you put X amount in and we'll put X amount in, uh, up to a certain amount, what was the amount, Doug, you mentioned?
Uh, the max of ten thousand.
The max of ten thousand, so resident puts in, or the owner, the business owner, the business puts in ten, uh, we can match ten. Uh, we, uh, as a budget allowance, put a hundred thousand dollars into that. So, I mean, you can see, we've got seven hundred thousand dollars allotted, uh, you know, for three different programs within the, the business tax district. And the facade, uh, facade rehabilitation, stone front repair rehabilitation, door and window replacement, exterior painting, awnings, lightings, tuck pointing, masonry repair, or other items viewed necessary or complementary to the business of, to the city of Fairfield. I know also, uh, you know, as, as we talked about this, um, there was, you, you know, thoughts of, you know, can we use that to extend some sidewalk projects from, from downtown to the college or, or to Walmart? Um, you know, a- again, I think that would fall under the municipal works program, if it could be worked out. And again, you, you know, it's new, um, but, you, you know, and, and, and don't take this the wrong way, uh, but Christmas lights are not an eligible expense. And that's not for me, that's from those guys. Now, I will say with that, the Christmas lights is on me. I was gonna get new Christmas lights last year and it got, the time got away from me. We will have new Christmas lights in downtown next Christmas. Uh, but, you, you know, it's important that, that we've put funds into this, and we need to make sure that the funds are used exactly what they're meant to be used for. It, it's not to, it's not to buy spray paint, it's not to buy rubers, it's not to buy nails, it's not to buy hammers. That's not what this is for, and, and I hope everybody knows that and understands that. This program can, can upkeep the downtown business district, but it needs to be done correctly. And, and that's, and, and I think we should expect that, and the residents should expect it, and the people that aren't eligible for it, expect that to be happening, you, you know? So, comments, questions, concerns, complaints, we're doing it wrong. Throw, throw it out there because we, we need to get it put in form that is black and white, and it easily be understandable, and it doesn't matter if I'm sitting in this chair or ten years down the road, somebody else is sitting in this chair, they know what it's to be used for, uh, because we have set forth those expectations.
Just what I'm seeing, if you didn't, if you're not in the business, the tax district, you didn't collect the tax, you're not eligible.
Yeah, the outline of the business tax district, if, if you're in the, in that outline, and you're in a retail operation, uh, and, and I think that's a key, because, I mean, there are, there are things, uh, that are in retail that are exempt from the one percent sales tax, medication, you, you know, food, uh, you, you know, but if, if you're, if you reside within the outlines of this business, and this district, I will say, was drawn a heck of a lot better than the Tiff. You know, the Tiff was jagged here, took this property, skipped this property, uh, I, I don't know how you drew it, but we've all, we can all assume it. But if you, if you're in this district, you're in a retail operation, you're eligible for this expense. Or you're eligible for the funding. Any other thoughts? I hope when you get home, you think about it a little more than you got some thoughts. And if anybody out there in the audience has some concerns or some thoughts, I mean, please, please bring them forward. Uh, you, you know? And let's, let's, let's move forward, you, you know, I, I, I talked with Doug, uh, you, you know, I, I think, I would like to see, I, I don't think he ought to be allowed to double dip. I don't think you should give a business tax district, and I don't think you should give a Tiff. You, you double dip, uh, you know, I kinda instructed, you know, Tiff, Tiff will expire in twenty-six, payable in twenty-seven, I believe, or twenty-seven payable in twenty-eight. You, you know, I think you're gonna see a push, uh, that we move away from Tiff. Uh, you know, I don't think it's wise that we eliminate it like we did Tiff too, uh, but I, I think we move away from it. We let that money sit there, the taxing bodies would love to see us let the money sit there, uh, and, and re, and then when it's all said and done, you know, everybody gets their fair, you know, their cut of the back. Again, uh, you, you know, we use the Tiff monies to, to move the water lines. There was a lot of people that didn't think that that was the right thing to do, but folks, that was the right thing to do. When, when you had a water hydrant, right down here on Main Street, you turn one on and it had water, but you went down to the next one and you turned it off and the water stopped, you know? If a business is the one to come to relive, keep in Fairfield, that's one of the first things they're gonna want to know, is do you have the infrastructure to support us? And if you don't, they're gonna look somewhere else. And, and it's tough enough to get businesses to even consider coming to Illinois. I've seen a report where Illinois is number two, but it's on people leaving the state. You, you know, they're exiting, they're not entering. Uh, but used properly, I, I, I think it can benefit the city. I think it can benefit the downtown businesses, and it's not only the downtown businesses, it goes all the way out the border. But we need some checks and balances, and, and that's what we're, we, we need to come up with. You know, we have meetings on Fridays, uh, with, with Doug and Livy and Claire, uh, you, you know, we've got some input. I look forward to some input from you guys, we'll call the Tiff committee, uh, and eventually we'll get this to ordinance form as quickly as we can, uh, to Attorney Rice, and he'll bring it back for approval, and once the approval is made, then we can start taking some, some applications. Any questions? Any comments, concerns? Okay, that will complete number seven. Uh, the financial report, uh, again, I'll reiterate, uh, as Michelle said, we got one checking account, this is the snapshot of. Uh, for the month of December, our expenses was one million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine. We had revenues of one million, six hundred and seventeen thousand, six oh five, with a net law, net income cash at a hundred and eight thousand, thirty-four dollars. Year-to-date, the city's expenses is at twelve million, eight hundred and thirty-five, three seventy-five. The revenues are twelve million, three hundred and eighty-six, fifty-two, with a negative income of four hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four. Cash flow for December was a negative thirty-seven thousand, six thirty-two. Again, we had, uh, you know, a few extra weeks of expenses, we had, uh, you know, some bond payments. Uh, we paid for the meters, uh, or part of the meters for the electric company. Uh, cash flow for the year-to-date is a negative seven hundred and fifty-five, four thirty-six. Payroll for the month of December was five hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine, three point one million dollars year-to-date. Gaming income, gaming income was at twelve thousand, seven eighty-one, ninety-three thousand, eight thirteen for the year. Sales tax income was a hundred and thirty-nine, six hundred, with one million, seventy-nine thousand for the year. The checking account balance at the end of December was one million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. And we have eight hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two in an interest-bearing C D account at the local bank. Again, bankruptcy's not an issue, not a concern, uh, but it couldn't be better, it can be better. Any questions on the financials? Miscellaneous, uh, I, I, I don't have anything under the miscellaneous comments, does anybody?
Yes, do we have any active grant writers writing any grants?
We have, we, we are a member of, uh, the Greater Wabash, uh, you know, Jeff Vaughn is the one that's, you know, that it has in contact with us. Uh, you know, we have, we have written a grant for the Eclipse money, that's a matching grant. Uh, you know, if we spend, we spend money, we're gonna get a grant of nine thousand dollars back. Uh, I have challenged Jeff to find me some grants for water lines. Uh, you, you know, but part of the water line grants is, they took it, they take you look at the low to moderate income numbers, so there's some hoops that we have to jump through there, you know, we're gonna have to go to our residents in that area. We're gonna ask, have to ask them to fill out an, an income statement. Uh, some people don't like to do that, but if, if they don't, we're not gonna get it. Uh, you know, so, but, uh, Jeff, we, we needed the audit to be completed so that they can look at, look at our L M I numbers. Uh, same way with, with Shannon, you, you know, on his, you know, now that the audit's complete, yes, we, we, we look for grants that are available. You know, some of them aren't, doesn't fit our niche, but if there's something, uh, that, that, you, you know, we find, uh, we'll take a look at trying to write a grant for it. Thank you. You're welcome. Nothing else?
Yeah, I have something. I have been getting several complaints of animals running loose in town, cats in particular, some dogs. And we do pay a fee to the Humane Society each month. And I have also got reports that people, residents are being instructed, if they can catch these animals, take them to the country and release them. I don't think that's the way our money should be used, the fee that we pay to the Humane Society. I think we need to look closely into that, what we are getting for our money.
Okay, and, uh, I, I'm not going to disagree with that, uh... You, you know, we pay the Humane Society two thousand dollars a month, um, you know, so that's twenty-four thousand dollars a year. The Wayne County has an agreement, uh, with, with the same organization, but I don't remember what their, their fee is. And I'm not, I'm just gonna state some facts, I'm not slamming anybody. The, the county board is also, I don't believe is, is, uh, in good, in good faith with the Humane Society. I think they're looking at different options. And I was kind, kinda just looking to see what they done, to see what needed to happen. You know, previously, uh, the Humane Society contract come before the council every year to be renewed. Currently, that is not how it's done. It can be suspended by the mayor, uh, but unless, unless we, uh, unless we wanna bring it to the city council and do the shutdown, it, it goes automatic, uh, continues. Again, I understand, you know, the displeasure with, with the cat situation, uh, you know, the feral cats are running around, the wild cats are running around, the dogs are running around, uh, and, and it's disappointing, uh, you know, that, you know, they're not picking them up because they're full. I mean, they are a no-kill, they are a no-kill facility, so it is their intentions that they find somebody to come and get, uh, the cats or the dogs or whatever they might have encountered. But I under, I, I understand what you're saying, Terry, and, you know, it's something, like I say, I was kinda watch, watching the county to see what, what their intentions were doing. I, I know they've had some conversations with a couple of other cities. Uh, you know, I, I know the city of Albion, uh, was advertised in here not too long ago for a dog catcher slash city employee, uh, with, with an hourly wage. But, you know, then, uh, if you do that, then you're going to have to have a facility to house them, and you're gonna have to medically take care of them. But I, I understand, you know, your, your concern, and, and we will continue to monitor it, and if the council needs to talk about it, we will.
Okay. Are we legally required by the state to keep one for our city, being a city, or? No?
No. The county is, um...
In charge of that part.
And, and I think, you, you know, the Wayne County Humane Society, you know, they have several, or they had, I don't know how many they should have had. I know they had, you know, contracts with SISNE, they had contracts with Wayne City, uh, and I know some of those have fallen by the wayside. You know, there was talk, you know, we, not too long ago, we had the conversation, uh, you know, Jeff, Jeff, Jeff Murphy made a presentation, uh, and at that time, uh, you, you know, we stood, we stayed with the Wayne County Humane Society. I don't, you know, at that time, uh, you know, I don't believe that our law enforcement should be another double duty as the, as the dog catcher and catching dogs and taking them down to the Humane Society and, and putting them in the pen. That's, they've got better things to do than to do that. But we'll monitor it, and if we need, and if I feel that it needs to come up for, for a vote, or an open discussion, uh, you know, I think we would, uh, it would benefit us to, to get the Humane Society personnel here so that we can ask them some questions. Okay? Anybody else?
Loud exhaust, how are we coming along on that issue?
Catch one, you get three others.
What, what's your recommendation?
On what?
Loud exhaust.
I have no idea, I get phone calls all the time about a loud truck's late at night going through.
You know, and, and I've, I've had, you know, this conversation, you, you know, uh... I have loud exhaust, go by Wayne Drive propane all the time, right there on Main Street. You know, I wish that sometimes if there was a police officer sitting in my driveway and I could say, "Go get it." Absolutely. But, you, you know, it, it's one thing, you, you know, when I'm sitting at a four-way stop and I, and the loud muffler comes through, or he rips on it and he stomps on it. They're not gonna do it when they see a gray truck or a black, you know, a black S U V. And, and Keith, you, you know, that was part of the, you know, the reason that we pass a vehicle down from the police department, because the residents are used to seeing that gray pickup truck with lights on it. So, when you see that gray pickup truck, even though the, the street breeze might be driving them, you know, maybe that helps them let off of that accelerator. I mean, give those guys the credit for coming up with that, that, that process. You know, we, we don't repaint it white, or we don't repaint it orange, we've got a couple of those trucks, but, uh, you, you know, I mean, that's just planning that we're, you know, that we try, because it's easy for me and you or anybody to see it. It's different for a police officer to observe it and be able to stop them, you, you know? I can promise you that there's not one person that's on duty that if somebody goes ripping by them with a loud exhaust, they're not gonna chase them down, or try. And, and, and the ones, you, you know, I had a resident do a lot of complaining on loud exhaust, uh, it didn't take a ticket. They went and visited him and said, "Hey, can you help us out a little bit?" You know, "We don't wanna give you a ticket." And that individual changed the, the muffler system.
They'll grow out of it.
You, you know, I, I mean, I understand it, but I, I mean, it, it's not like they're, they've got a blind eye and they're just not paying attention. I, it's just like running a stop sign. How many people do I see when I, you know, come blowing through a stop sign? It happens. And it's not gonna happen when there's, when there, when there's a M P plate sitting at the other, at the other stop sign.
I can sit in my house and see them running one in front of the street station.
But we, I mean, they're, they'll, they'll do the best that they can, uh, you know? It, it, yeah, that's what I said. Any other miscellaneous comments? If not, is their motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
All in favor? Poll? Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for attending. Have a happy new year.